All right, welcome to the Milford Board of Selectmen's meeting, January 22, 2018. Going to bounce around the agenda a little bit tonight, just to get our folks that are here for a public hearing in and out pretty quickly. The first order of business is signing of the warrant.
I'll move, Mr. Chairman, sign the warrant.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous. We have minutes from a regular session for January 8.
Moved.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous. And we also have to approve minutes for the regular session of January 17.
I'll move. Second that as well, Mr. Chairman.
I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous. Next is public hearings and scheduled appointments. Bug Restaurant Holdings, a transfer of license. Mr. Antonellis? Attorney Antonellis, sorry.
I'm here on behalf of the transferor, which is Bug Restaurant Holdings. The board may recall, this is a license incidental to the Kmart Plaza. This was the license that at one time belonged to Bugaboo Creek. And we, as you know, we have two licenses there. We've had the opportunity to attract a very successful pub tenant to the facility, and we've executed a contract to transfer the license pending the approval of this board. And the applicant is here tonight. And so invite them all up. And I think that primarily, they're going to do most of the work tonight, tell you a little bit about themselves. I know Attorney Meridian, who was originally from Shrewsbury, is here tonight on behalf of the applicant. He works in a law firm in Lynn with Attorney Greg Dismaskas, who has been before this board in the past, who is what I consider to be a specialist in the license area. And so they, in my opinion, have hired very good counsel to make their presentation to you, and I'll let them go from there. And if there are any questions relative to the transferers, and we're here, I think we've got all of our taxes and everything caught up to date. There were a couple little pieces that had fallen through the cracks because of the personal property tax, but I think we've got them all with the assistance of Gene and Rick. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening. My name is Attorney John Meridian from Demarcus Law. With me is Alan Freddy, who is the proposed manager of record for Red Heat Tavern. Tonight, we're just seeking a transfer of the license to Red Heat Tavern, Milford LLC, both liquor license and common virtual license. Approval of the alteration of the premises to add on an outdoor patio for seating.
Oh, great.
And then change of the manager to Alan Freddy here. It's a pretty simple, straightforward deal. I'll let Alan speak more about what kind of restaurant they plan to open and operate. He's more familiar with that. But those are really the three main things we're asking for tonight. So, Alan, go ahead.
Yep. How you doing?
Welcome.
Thanks for having me. So, the restaurant's called Red Heat Tavern. We're a casual, family-friendly restaurant, scratch kitchen. We do takeout, we do a little bit of catering and delivery. Craft beer, craft cocktails. Really, the centerpiece of the kitchen and of our food is our Jossper oven, which is a coal-fired oven that we actually import from Barcelona, Spain. It's really kind of adds some unique flavors to some of our dishes. So, a lot of tavern food, burgers, wings, meatloaf, American comfort food, some of the classics, so.
That's great. I know since it hit the paper.
Yes.
People have been definitely talking about it. So, I think we're looking forward to having it in town.
Yeah, we're excited to be coming to Milford, for sure.
Okay, we'll have all your information here, what we have, and Joe alluded to it, the department head review form, building commissioner allowable use, building is still under construction, town planner, no change of actual use, no outstanding taxes from the tax collector, no tax liens from the town treasurer, the fire department has no objection at this time, and the police chief has no issues or concerns. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just one comment with the change of the layout. Is that just something we remand to planning, Rick? Do you know?
Yes, have to go through planning and through inspections. They'll have to go through.
I can address a part of that, I apologize.
No, it's all right.
When we did the site plan review for the plaza, we included the outdoor seating in all of our calculations, and that is shown on the approved site plan, not only for that particular facility, but also for Starbucks and two of the others. So, the part of the anticipation of having seats outside was incorporated in the site plan.
Okay, so there's no need to remand the planning?
No.
And is there anything you need from this board in terms of vote with respect to that outdoor seating area?
Only because it's part of the alteration of the premises.
Technically, an alteration, they're adding on a patio to the already buildings there.
Existing, yeah.
Preserving structure, that's why we need the approval.
Yeah, just approve the request for the alterations and for them to go forward. Obviously, inspections at the end, we'll have to review to make sure they've done what they're supposed to do and what they said they would do.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question. Attorney Antonellis, didn't we, and maybe something got by me here, but didn't we originally, when that plaza went under construction, transfer twice?
There are two licenses.
Okay.
In the plaza. This is the second one.
Okay.
That we brought in. The first one was a license that was on another premises, and we transferred, and that's in a location, sort of to be held for tenant.
Yep.
This was the license for Bugaboo that we, it is basically the same address. So, when we decided which license to transfer them, we transferred the one to them with John's assistance to make sure that the A, B, C, C recognized that it was the license for that locus.
Okay, so the same owners?
The same, well, the other one is held, this is Bug Restaurant Holdings, and the other one was Milford Restaurant Holdings. So, you still have a license with Milford Restaurant Holdings that is in abeyance, so to speak, waiting for a tenant.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. You know, with that, Mr. Chairman, and the explanation we received from the manager, what I'd be interested in doing is going ahead and making a motion to transfer the alcoholic, common virtual license to Red Heat Tavern of Milford LLC, 120-128 Medray Road, and include the alterations of premises?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and also vote in favor and make that unanimous. Have a good night and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you, Joe.
Good night, Joe.
Good seeing you all.
Take care.
Okay. I'm just going to go off the agenda for a couple of minutes and hopefully have a dialogue with my colleagues as well regarding the all boards meeting that we had last week. I just want to thank all of the independent boards and committees and department heads as well that showed up. I think it was a very successful night. It certainly lasted, actually longer than I was anticipating, but I actually mean that in a very positive way, because everyone was engaged, and the conversation just kept growing. There were quite a few common themes, but everything was very positive, and I think even some changes that have been made, and under Rick's direction, with his department heads, as well as the other independent boards in this building. I think we're well on our way, and I think what we agreed to collectively was that maybe twice a year, a meeting like this should take place. Obviously, there were like four common themes, so we thought maybe of possibly subcommittees getting together, because we want to keep the ball moving forward, and I think that's going to get done. I think between the board and Rick, we can make sure that a lot of those goals are met, especially since most of the communication is between people in this building. So, it shouldn't be difficult for them to get together and figure out how to improve communication and operation. So, I'm speaking vaguely, but everything was extremely positive, and I was very happy that the amount of people that showed up and the amount of participation, and I want to thank you both for being there, as well as Rick. I don't know if either of you have anything to add to it, but I think overall, it's the start of something good. And to quote Assessor Joe Arcudi, "This should have happened a long, long time ago." And you know what? You don't realize that until people come together and recommend it. And I'm glad they did, they recommended that to me, and I'm glad that this board was able to facilitate that, so.
I think what was interesting about it, Mr. Chairman, is that if you, when you sat there and listened to everybody's presentation, a lot of people didn't realize what other people's jobs tasked were, but the most important theme that came out of that meeting to me was you can never have enough communication. And I spoke about it that night. I said, "Your action will have a reaction somewhere down the line." And so, when you go to, you know, make a decision, make a choice, you have to stop and think about who that's going to affect down the line that's, you know, has a job responsibility, that's going to be responsible for the decision that you make. And that was common knowledge. That came out all night long, the word communicate, 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 communicate. And I think we need to keep that theme going, is that nobody's on their own little island, nobody's on their own little island, and we all need to work together. You know, great point was me, we're a $100 million a year corporation. It may be the town of Milford, but you know, it's a $100 million a year corporation, and everybody's got to work together. They do a great job, they truly, truly do, but as everybody knows, we can all always get better. And I think that's the most important thing, and I agree. I think that it's something we need to continue to carry on and keep everybody talking.
Well said. I appreciate that, Mike. Bill?
Yeah, some takeaways for me is, you know, and I sent some notes to you and Rick, but I have more notes that I've scribbled down that I can glean more information from. You know, first of all, we should work to make sure we've got a warm spot, and that meeting was cold. And the other thing was, and that's not criticism, I know there's some things going on with the heat in the building, and they're being addressed, so that's happening. You know, the second piece is, I don't think any of us knew really what to expect, or how long it might take. You try to gauge it, you try to put on an agenda. We have some minutes. The town hall and the other boards, in addition to just the ones that report to the Board of Selectment, serve vital customer and public service aspects of our community. So, there's a lot to talk about. So, my first comment is, maybe any follow-up meetings, we do a half-day offsite with representatives from the board. We still have enough coverage that we can cover the anticipated needs of the town with other personnel, but maybe it's a half-day offsite that would work better and, you know, have lunch there. So that, because that's a lot of time for so many people to be, you know, disconnected from their family and working at night in addition to a long day.
That's a valid point, Bill.
The other thing, those are just process improvements. The other thing is, I would reach out to the different boards and committees, see if there's something that we should put on the agenda that's not on the agenda. Have them make it their agenda and contribute to it. But thematically, I noticed certainly parking and infrastructure were concerns, security plan of the building, I recommended a survey. One of the big pieces for us to give better customer satisfaction, permitting process to make sure applicants understand their obligations, and the various boards have an opportunity to weigh in on, you know, what's happening with different permits that are pulled. One of the things that was brought up is sign-off and routing for approval by planning, building, ZBA, Conservation Commission. Make sure that before properties are transferred, orders of condition are understood and have been met. You know, one of the things I noticed was, that was brought up, was transportation of youth between school and youth center. We should look at what the specific liabilities are, what the specific age restrictions, what's available by statute for allowing people, or young children, and I don't know where the age breakdown is, we should look at the demand and see what the schools and what the youth center can handle, but find out what the legal ramifications are transporting those kids from there to the youth center. Because there's demand for it, and there's parental demand, and we just put $5 million and over $5 million into the youth center, so. And then the last one is task force integration. Right now, we don't currently have a method by which we integrate all of the various calls to different boards, public safety, and others, so that we have a well-coordinated task force process. So, for example, in trying to determine from a fire chief's standpoint what building they've been in and what observations were made when they went into a call, there's no place by which to record that and allow all the various task force members, board of health, police, building department, and others to view it and see it. And so, if they have an opportunity to forward something, an area of concern, those buildings should be, those buildings and premises should be the highest priority items for the next task force. In the past, it's been, I'll call it ad hoc, as to how those buildings and premises were chosen, and I just, I think that coordination would be helpful. It was brought up at that meeting, I thought it was a great suggestion, so those were some of the ones that I had sent a note on, so.
No, and I think those are the four areas that would, as we closed the meeting, I had spoke about that that's where the people that are each affected by those and want to see those improved, that's how the subcommittee should be formed. And I even mean voluntarily, there were certain segments of the group around the table that.
During work hours.
Exactly, that was their concentration, just like safety was.
Yeah.
Parking and infrastructure here. I think those are things.
And at the library.
And at the library. And I think those are the things that need to move forward, so when we do have that second meeting this year, we get updates on those and then are moving forward to continue those priorities, but also that's when you can add new priorities to the list that you want to see, you know. I believe in setting goals, meeting the goals, and then setting new goals. So, I think that's the simplest way to do it, so hopefully, between this board and Rick, we can get that message across and hope that we see some movement.
Yeah.
And then, obviously, by the time the second meeting comes around, we're getting updated on that and then talking about the next agenda items.
And I think one of the things this board could do to the endpoint of looking to get some help from state legislature, and if not at this meeting, another meeting, but soon, because the process takes so long, is to look for earmark legislation that allow us to do feasibility studies on our parking situation at town hall and library, and also to include land acquisition costs. So, if there's an opportunity to pick up a grant, pick up an earmark, at least our legislators should know some of our priorities, some of the things we need. They just came through with an earmark for something we've been championing for a while. We haven't gotten the check yet, I made that transfer, but it should be soon, right on the opioids.
Yes.
$50,000 for opioids, for which I thank both State Representative Murray and Senator Orion Fatman. But those are the ways in which we take a little bit of the burden off of the taxpayer and, well, the local taxpayer. We've all paid into state taxes, and it's going, those earmarks and those dollars are going to some community somewhere in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We might as well be clear about the types of things we need. I've heard it a lot from employees here and customers, residents, about the difficulty parking in the town hall and the challenge of the oversubscribed library, right? We're underserving residents in this community if they can't park, if they can't easily get in to do business with the town hall, and if they can't easily get in and out of the library. So, it's a challenge. It's okay, there's a challenge, as long as we're all talking about it and know it. And maybe we'll look at next agenda, where we talk about communicating with our state reps and think about those priorities. Because solving the problem at the, here, at town hall, is not going to be an easy task.
True.
So, we've got to think about how to do that.
Okay.
And communicate to our FinCom a pressing need. The chairman was there, but we should more broadly communicate within our subcommittees, both from general town hall and library, the types of needs we have as well. That's it. But thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the fact that you called that meeting. Rick, I appreciate how difficult it was for you to facilitate getting that meeting called, because it was the first ever, and I got to believe a lot of people were coming to you saying, "What do they want? What do they really need? What does this mean?"
Few questions.
We're learning, we're evolving, it's a learning process, and this is how organizations learn, so it's okay. If we stumble through some of them, and we make each one, successive one, better.
Okay. No, and I'll just add to that, which I should have said, that the following day, I received a number of emails from other chairs and department heads of the independent, the other independently elected boards. Simply, not one complained about how the meeting went. We all knew this was our first one. All positive just in the fact and appreciative that we held it. So, that was all good and.
We'll get better.
I should have said that earlier on, that, and they're looking forward to them continuing. I'm still going off, skipping around the agenda, I shouldn't say I'm going off the agenda, I'm just kind of skipping around. I'm going to, I guess, use this as under correspondence, because I wanted to give the attention that it deserves. We received, today we received a formal letter from Jerry Moody, our longtime town council of 39 years. Dear Mr. Kincaid, this letter will serve to confirm the informational information I gave to yourself last week regarding my plans for retirement. As I indicated to you, it is my intention to retire effective March 17, 2018. That will be close to 39 years as town council in Milford, and for a variety of reasons, I have determined that it is time to retire. The two-month period should give the board sufficient time to go through the process of advertising, interviewing, and selecting a successor. I am aware that there can be matters which require continuity in terms of my involvement past that retirement date. I will be happy to work with the board on an arrangement that ensures that those matters are properly covered while my successor begins to become acclimated. Very truly yours, Gerald M. Moody, Town Council. I just want to say that, you know, this was a surprise to me last week, when we were kind of told informally that he was thinking about it. I want to say, as for me, this is kind of an end of an era. All my years on the school committee and as a town meeting member since I was 18 or 19 years old, I can say that Jerry's, obviously with 39 years' experience, has always been there. And I just wanted to say how much I appreciate his service. There aren't many careers left where someone puts 39 years in a single position. You certainly don't hear about that anymore. And for one, I just want to let Jerry, as well as the general public, know that I appreciate his service, but far more than that, I respect it. He has been there through ups and downs of all different time periods and of Milford, and I just, I'm not sure what else to add, other than it's a long time, but it's, excuse me, it's certainly going to be an interesting path going forward without him here, so I just wanted to bring that up.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, you know, I've worked with Jerry over 20 years, found him to be very capable, very honest, and very clear communicator, very understanding of mass statute. He would provide committees, boards, individuals, guidance, and navigation paths through some difficult processes, whether they be claims, whether they be collective bargaining agreements. The council is involved in so many things, and as of late, the last few years, the water company. So, I find him very capable, and as you said, the word "respect" is the one that's important here, because, you know, I've had the opportunity to work with him on a variety of things, and I can certainly say, he's always well-informed, researched, and has been providing counsel to this community in the best interest of the community for a very long time. Basically, back out the years, and, you know, he started when he was 29, that's a very long time. And, you know, I would match him up against any town council in the Commonwealth, because those years of experience and his intelligence in addressing those and understanding and navigating, not in a bad sense, the politics of the times, too, because as boards change, people change, he was adept at navigating that and tiptoeing sometimes through some difficult processes. So, I give him a lot of credit and a lot of respect, and I want to thank him for his years of service. He hasn't left yet. It's not time to throw his retirement party, but it's coming up soon. This leaves us a very, very narrow window. You know, when we look at, people will look at March 17 date and think that's a long time out. It is not. So, the only caution I have for the board is, we have to move quickly, because the absence of a council is not acceptable. So, we'll always need a council here. We've had one for a very long time, and we need to get moving. That's just my thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Of course.
I was thinking about this today, and as well, it was a shock, you know, when I got the letter. I was with Jerry this morning for a while, and I was thinking back, I've known Jerry, I came to Milford in 1986, and I've known Jerry since 1986. And, you know, whenever I called him, he was always there, always picked up the phone, always gave me good advice at that time as a citizen of the community, was always very, very helpful. Later on, as you know, I ran for school committee, served two years as chairman of the Milford School Committee. There was never a time, never a time that I picked up the phone and called Jerry for advice. You being a former chairman of the school committee know yourself, there's times where things are coming down and you need some advice, and he was always there, always gave me good advice. Sometimes he would say to me, "This is what you should do. You're going to make some enemies, but this is what you got to do." And so, he was always there. And, you know, I saw this earlier, and I was with Rick this afternoon, and I said, "You know what, Rick? I'm not going to accept this letter." And Rick goes, "Well, he's not resigning, he's retiring."
Yeah, that's the difference.
And for that, you have to wish him well personally, right?
Exactly. And, you know, I agree with Bill's comments. He'd be greatly missed, greatly missed. He's a fountain of knowledge, doesn't always tell you what you want to hear, but he's a fountain of knowledge. I was amazed today when I was sitting with him, and he was telling me some of the cases that the town has been involved in. And then he took me in, and he showed me, because I honestly had no idea. He said, "Let me give you an example." He took me and he showed me all the documentation from the last rate case. And I was like, "Oh, my gosh." I mean.
The volumes.
Exactly, the volumes. And, you know, he's just been a huge, huge asset to this town. Gave me some advice, gave me some advice, but we're going to have, it's an old saying, we're going to have a big set of shoes to fill, you know, filling this position. And he did assure me, he said, "I'm not going anywhere." He said, "I'm retiring." He said, "But I'll be there, you know, I'll be there if you need me." Because, you know what? We're going to need him. We got the water company situation, we've got a couple of other things going on right now, and we're going to need somebody with his vast experience, vast knowledge, his street smarts. So, you know, Jerry, as a friend, I just want to say, you'll always be a good friend, but I also want to say thank you to and for 39 years of service to this community. And as Selectman Buckley said earlier, and Mr. Chairman, you said, "It's pretty rare, pretty rare to find somebody that stays with, you know, municipal company, whatever you want to call it, for 39 years." I just want to say, thank you, thank you, and great job, and you will truly be missed when that day comes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I'm going to move under new business and go to the timeline, and the draft application process, and the draft job description that our town administrator, Rick, put together. And I just want to say that, you know, at this point, obviously, the Board of Selectmen being the appointing authority, you know, we have a couple options here. Not with, obviously, making the appointment, but the Board of Selectmen can either act as the search committee and post the position, screen the candidates, select for interviews, and make an appointment. Our other option is, we can appoint a search committee that will be tasked with finalizing the posting or advertising the position, selecting a group for initial interviews, and then recommending a number of finalists or a finalist back to the Board of Selectmen. If that's something, and I hope we can have that discussion, or at least start it this evening, if the board, I did some preparation this weekend, I had spoken to Rick about it, and the fact that if this board does decide to go with the search committee, I've asked, I've asked three attorneys to serve on the search committee if the board decides to move in that direction. I've asked Laura Mann and Mike Knofrey, both longtime Milford attorneys, and Jed Nozel, our counsel from Brown and Rudnick in Boston. Jed is a counsel at Brown Rudnick in the Government Law and Strategies Group in Boston. He's held that, and he's held many positions in the executive branch, the Attorney General's office, and he's been a member of a number of search committees, including the State Police Colonel in 2004. Mike Knofrey, we all know, he's been our longtime town moderator and has been practicing law in Milford for many, many years. Laura is also an attorney in Milford specializing in real estate, zoning law, and land use. If a search committee is approved, and this search committee is approved, I would ask that Laura serve as its chair. that Laura serve as its chair. I know that's a lot, I just threw it at both of you, but if there's any initial reaction, that's where either, you know, the Board of Selectmen do it all with the assistance of Rick, or I think if we are gonna have a search, then I think two local attorneys and one consultant acting as the third member, someone that we've actually worked with for well over a year now, with our water company and the Department of Public Utilities, actually Jerry found Jed for us, and I think he's been a heck of a resource. And then, looking up at his bio, he, he's been involved with many, many things at the state level, and I think he'd be an asset to professionalize the search. So, those are, those are my two options if-
I have a question for you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I was thinking about this today. Do you think that we should also put Jerry on that committee?
I actually talked to Rick about this, and I actually wanted to keep it to three-
Okay.
-knowing that Rick would serve as a resource, and if Jerry wants to be there, Rick can find it. Just because he is retiring, I'm not sure you want to put someone on to find their replacement, but I think he should serve as a resource if he chooses to. I don't even want that pressure on. So, I think he has a long, lot of history, obviously, with both Laura and Mike Noferi, as well as, obviously, having a relationship with Jed. So, I think that he would probably serve as a resource if, if, if he chose to, but I think keeping it to those three that are kind of-
Okay.
Kind of part of, you know, very involved with town, but not part of town government.
And, and, and I don't have a problem with the committee, but the one thing that I do want is, because we are the appointing authority, I want the opportunity to personally interview-
Absolutely.
-the, you know, the attorneys that they're gonna bring to us. I want the, I, I don't want to come in one night and have to make a decision. I want the opportunity to, they give us two names or three names, I want the opportunity to be able to sit and, and interview those people, you know, I should say, all of us, and then the three of us-
Absolutely. And that, quite honestly, is up to this body.
Yeah.
So, I think once we decide on a direction, whether it be tonight, or if need be, we call another meeting next week, where we're just talking about this and where to go, and but I think, again, like most things, even when the superintendent starts, you know, you end up interviewing the, the top, whatever, and that number is whatever, whatever we want it to be.
Yeah. I'm good.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you going through this level of detail and trying to outline the process. The process can take a lot of different, you know, routes, but I like the idea, my first reaction is, I like the idea of a small committee. I also like the idea of the individuals you chose. Each one highly regarded in their community, well-regarded for their accomplishments, both individually as people and as accomplished attorneys. I had no idea that Jed Nozel's background had been that varied, that varied, and that involved in prior searches. I, I've come to know him through the Milford Water Company acquisition process. I hold him in high regard. I respect him immensely, and as you said, Jerry found him for us, and that was another case of Jerry finding the right person for the job. I like the idea of his inclusion, and I like the idea that we kick off this committee as soon as possible. The only thing is, you know, I think from a process standpoint, do you have a thought process on the path or process flow?
Yeah, well, I think what we need to do is look at the proposed timeline that Rick provided with us. In order to get in the beacon, if that was a priority of ours, I mean, that deadline is tomorrow for February first. I did ask Rick, what if we don't make the January twenty-third deadline? He said that would push it off to a March first, I believe so, right?
That's correct.
A March first publication date. Now, we can discuss whether or not, what level of priority that is. I know, I mean, Rick did mention, we can get it on the MMA website, I mean, that, and I think that goes up pretty much as soon as, within a reasonable amount of time-
Once I send in and it's approved, yes.
So, I, I don't want to be, I don't want to be so concerned that, that we feel pressed because Jerry gave us a March seventeenth deadline. If that turns out that that is completely, and Jerry does feel, in his letter, he does feel that that leaves us enough time, but I just want, for my own thought process this weekend, when I was going through this stuff, it was just the point that we shouldn't feel pressured or cornered to, to hit that date if it's not gonna mean getting the people that we want. So, I think getting the people, the right people to apply, getting the right people interviewed, getting the right recommendations to us, is obviously the top priority.
Yeah, hitting the beacon isn't as important as doing this process right. And that would tell you, this being the first discussion that this board has had, and opportunity to review draft documents, and Rick, we appreciate, I appreciate-
Yeah, he got this together pretty quickly.
Yeah, he did. He was able to get this together pretty, pretty quick. But what I would suggest is that each of us have an opportunity to look at the job description and weigh in on what the board's priorities are. You know, personally, you know, whether it's ten years' experience, five years' experience, seven years' experience, those are things that we all have to weigh in on and, and come to agreement. Jerry, I don't think would have qualified for this job when he first applied, so I think we ought to look at it very carefully. That's, that is, Jerry wouldn't have qualified based on the draft, right? He was twenty-nine, wouldn't have had ten years' legal experience, so I don't want to disqualify young potential attorneys that are out there with seven years of experience. So, we've got to decide what it is that we think is a priority. With that said, I want it to be, the process that you've outlined hits my requirements, and, and that looks to be a process that's void of politics, looking to simply get the most qualified and capable person. My understanding and talking with different councils, there may be a possibility that we, we receive a hundred applicants, because of the assistant attorneys out there, Attorney General's Office, town solicitors that are counselors for their respective communities that may be assistants and looking to move up, or there may be town councils that are looking to move on. So, there's a variety of people that might apply for this, and for a variety of reasons. This, this town has been covered by an active and full-time town counselor, and if I'm a town, a town counselor or wannabe town counselor, that's exactly where I would want to go. Not taking the business from subcontracted counsel and bringing it inside, but following on where a town council has already existed. So, you know, my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna do one of two things. I'm gonna suggest, make two suggestions. One, I'm prepared to adopt the suggestions that you have. I think they're good. I think the people are good. So, I think I would make a motion to appoint that committee as structured as you recommended. And I appreciate you doing that work. I know it takes time to get in touch with all these people. First, you have to find out if they have interest in the job. If they have interest in the job, they're precluded in participating, obviously. If they're not interested, or at a different point in their career to take on a role like this, then that means they would be perfect candidates, and I'm glad you reached out to them. The second suggestion I have is that we look at the job description and get back together very soon, as early as next, I'm sorry, this week, if we need to take a few days.
So, you, you made a, is there a second on the, on the search committee?
Second on the search committee.
Okay.
Second on that.
All right, so I'll, I'll vote in favor of the, the search committee and make that unanimous, and again, that is Jed Nozel, Mike Noferi, and Laura Mann acting as chair.
And if I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is, and, and I agree with Selectman Buckley, I think that we need to look at the job description, but I think we also need to give the town administrator permission to get it into the beacon as soon as possible, because I don't think getting it into the beacon as a, for lame words, a help-wanted situation is, is gonna have any effect on us as far as tweaking the job description.
Well, I think we need to know what we're looking for to put in the beacon.
And your take on that, Rick?
The only thing, the issue would be if, if you're going to revise or tweak the job description, obviously, the beacon does contain some of the things that are in the job description. So, for example, I think the ten years' experience is in there, just looking at one thing. So, if that's the case, I would need to tweak the beacon, and also Lawyer's Weekly.
Yeah.
Lawyer's Weekly is a little shorter ad.
And, and I don't say, I, I'm not saying that, the reason I, to the chairman's point earlier, I'm not saying rush the process, but I think we should get it in, in print as soon as possible.
I agree. As soon as we know what we're looking for, is the way I'm thinking, because my preference is to get it right before we get it fast. And so, there's an opportunity to hit the beacon with a, a job description that we haven't had the time with, and I'd like to take a little bit more time.
Now, just to, just for the, I guess, for the benefit of the public that are watching, and we're here, we are talking about the beacon. The beacon is the, the printed publication of the Massachusetts Municipal Association.
Yes, comes out monthly. Lawyer's Weekly now comes out weekly.
So, we get it Lawyer's Weekly, and as long as we can get it-
That one I would like to-
...on the website of the MMA, are we that concerned that it's printed in the monthly newsletter?
Typically, though, you do the ad in the beacon, then it goes on the website, so I'll have to check to see if we can-
I mean, I think they would still take the check and put it on the website. We would just miss the publication. I don't know. I, I think that's-
Good question. I can, let me find out on that. It's a good question. Yeah.
But I think you've structured and outlined, Rick, that, that gives us good guidance. Now, the question is to what, how do we want to tweak it, and what does this board agree on for service and what?
Unless we want to say, I mean, do we want to say that, you know, I mean, do we put the, if we're okay with the, the salary range, and then the second paragraph, do we leave for, you know, for minimum qualifications and, I mean, contacts? I mean, if, if we want, tomorrow, this would be needed tomorrow. Unless we can, everyone can get their suggested edits in by tomorrow, but-
I, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't even worry about this, the edits. I would, I would get it to press as, as fast as you can, so that it, it, it becomes common knowledge, so people start to look at it.
No, I understand, but if we post this, and, and again, I'm not trying to make a legal thing out of it, if, just hearing you guys, if any of this changes, then it's not an accurate posting. So, then people are applying for jobs, and if anything changes, people have a legitimate gripe that, "Oh, I didn't apply," because that goes across the state. So, do we say, you know, minimum, for minimum, for minimum qualifications, dah 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 dah, you know, reach out? I'm just saying, I mean, I can, I can go either way.
That would be, that would be the ad, Mike, today.
Yep.
And I'm one person that has concern with it. I don't know if anybody else has concerns with it. I'm okay with trying to get it to the beacon, but I'm not prepared to outline what I think the, the changes are, unless we want to try to negotiate that now.
I think we should. I think we should, I think it needs to get into the beacon as, and again, not to rush the process, I'm not saying that, but I think it needs to get into the beacon as soon as possible.
See, I don't think the beacon's that magical.
Well, the thing is, if we want to talk about it, we're here, we can, we can do that.
Yeah.
We can try to work it out.
Yeah.
I don't know if anyone had any, any other suggested changes.
Yeah, what are the other suggestions? Mike, you have any suggestions?
I, I'll be honest, I don't have any problem with this job description right here. You're feeling? I mean, you think the ten years-
Well, no, my feeling is, this would have precluded Jerry Moody from becoming employed here when he first applied.
Because he had, wouldn't he have five?
If he were twenty-nine, he probably didn't have any more than five. I know, I got out of law school at, actually, twenty-six, I think.
Well, again, I mean, we can talk about years. I'm talking more about that, you know, if you go, if you look at the MMA site now, the city of Somerville, I was on today, the city of Somerville is looking for an assistant city solicitor, the city of Newton is looking for a city solicitor, and I'm just saying that their postings aren't a paragraph saying, "We want you to have jury and jury way of trial experience." They're saying, "We want you to have this, this," all very specific stuff.
Just bullets, yeah.
Yeah, just bullets, including, yes, including trial, but also including, you know, land acquisitions, and if you want municipal experience, or we don't, or we don't, we're not looking for that. It was just, there was a lot of, there was a lot more specific. So, again, if we want, if we're looking for something like that, if this, if this generally is going to attract the, the pool of candidates that, that we're comfortable with, then I just know that I, I looked at those, I have no, you know, I may be splitting hairs, so.
So, Rick, you're saying, your knowledge of when he came here to Milford, it was probably about five years?
Yeah, because I, I know, quite ironically, I interned for Jerry thirty-six years ago here, before I even passed the bar.
You were eight at the time.
I, I was maybe twenty-five, a long time ago. So, I mean, I do, I mean, he wouldn't have had the municipal experience. The ten years here is, there is language that kind of says, if you don't have the ten years, if you have the education, training, and experience, the board would be free to not stick to the ten years, for example, in the job description. The other alternative is-
To the chairman's point, do you think leaving that number in there, the ten-year number, is just gonna, certain candidates will not apply because they don't have the ten years of experience?
They might, if they haven't looked at the job description in detail. But if they look at the job description, you know, it says, "Combination of education, training, and experience, which provides the requisite knowledge, skills, et cetera." Again, we could put it in the beacon and take some of that language out, but then you pretty much have a bare bones-
Yeah.
...which I'm not partial to, only because if I were looking at it, I'd want-
Good reference zoning.
But you can-
Good reference, other aspects of municipal law, where they may have some transferable knowledge, having, let's just say you have a six-year town council, I mean, I'm sorry, six-year lawyer who's made a specialty out of zoning, worked with zoning boards of appeals, planning boards, has litigated some cases, has some of this experience, they can tie together, and, like I said, come up with six years of experience. That's okay. They may not have direct town council experience, they may not be an assistant city solicitor, right?
True.
So, right off the top, I look at it and say, zoning, and zoning-related issues are something that should be called out specifically, in addition to municipal law, and, yeah, I don't think we should write a job description that would preclude our current, would have precluded our current town council from becoming town council. We clearly did well, thirty-nine years, and his wealth of experience and knowledge, and some of that was gained over time, but some of that he came in with. So, that's my, that's my, add, add reference to, for zoning, and I would knock down the ten years, and if Jerry was an attorney for five years, I would say that if I can do as well as that, then I'd write five years, if I could do as well as finding another Jerry.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you would agree to that, I mean, so that we can get it to press tomorrow?
No, I, I absolutely will. Again, I was never, I wasn't concerned with that. I was more concerned with, you know, the language of, you know, you know, the education and training, I mean, that is all good, but I'm just looking at-
This is the ad, right?
Again, I'm looking at, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm looking at other ones that say, "A member in good standing in the Massachusetts Bar, must have excellent abilities in organization communication, both oral and written, as well as critical and analytical and managerial, drafts, drafting state legislation, home rule petitions, city ordinance, rules, regulations, appearing before city boards and commissions as needed, inter-" I mean, there's, there's a whole lot of information in that, but again, if, if, if we're just concerned about the, the minimum years, and we can take care of that, and the board's satisfied, then that's why we'll have a screening committee to, to try to work out the rest.
Well, if it's the board's, if it's the board's desire to hit the beacon tomorrow, then as a matter of compromise- then as a matter of compromise, I could see drafting and changing that number of 10 and adding zoning and having come before town boards. But it still feels quick. And it's arbitrary, the date of the, the date of the Beacon publishing versus what our needs are and how much time this board's had to think about it. This discussion outlines how much time the board has had to think about it. And clearly, Will, you've spent more time outlining a process and bringing that forward so we could get moving on it, but we didn't spend that time as a board talking about what that job description is and what we should advertise in the Beacon. So it'd still be my preference not to go to the Beacon tomorrow. I don't think we're ready. Unless there's a motion on the table that might be able to satisfy and compromise.
Well, and I would. Can I just, I'm sorry, Mike.
Go ahead.
If, if we make the changes to the, and you guys agree to the, to the minimum years.
Five.
And then, and then this, that's the, this is the whole ad, right here?
That is the, yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
Well, I imagine that, you know, you're asking for a letter, I mean, let's just go through the rest of this. "The application packet submitted by qualified candidates shall include at a minimum the following documents: Letter of intent, including a statement of reasons why the candidate believes he or she is qualified for the position; up-to-date comprehensive resume detailing educational background and experience; and evidence of educational coursework." Is there anything else that we should be asking for in the application process if the, if the ad is gonna be
Modified.
Modified to the five years and... Well, no, I don't even think we need to, I mean, I don't think if we're gonna get that, if, I would, I guess I would rather leave it general than start getting specific. I was talking more about the job description being.
Chairman, that's the actual Beacon ad. I wonder if it's not in your packet. I apologize.
No, that's the one I have.
Okay, you do, okay.
So I'm confused.
The one you're looking at though is Lawyer's Weekly, which is a shorter ad.
This is the one I'm marking.
Two different ones. Okay, if I can take that one back. Yeah, you have that, I thought, yeah. Bill, I'm sorry, you were looking at the Lawyer's Weekly ad, which is a shorter one, and I couldn't quite see it from here.
Okay.
Okay, so if.
The Beacon ad is a much longer.
So a minimum of five years of progressively responsible legal experience, including municipal law experience, the majority of which is in Massachusetts, with jury and jury waived trial experience or any equivalent combination of education, training, and experience which provides the required knowledge, skills, and abilities to perform the essential functions of the position. Okay, so, that's fine. They know what they have to, they know what they have to submit.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept the changes from 10 years to five years. And we give the town administrator permission tomorrow to place the ad.
Bill, can you second that?
I can.
I'll vote in favor to make that unanimous.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, can I just, is that the only change? I apologize.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, because everything else, their letter of intent and everything, they're gonna have to.
Yeah, I couldn't quite see what you were looking at from here. My apologies also.
Well, in the letter of intent, we're just gonna have to hope that they do what they need to to properly represent themselves.
Okay.
Okay. Town, while we're under new business, the town administrator regarding the annual town meeting date?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recommend May 14th. We actually are opening up a little earlier this year than we have in the past. I think this will give ample time for, obviously, this board, FinCom, to review any and all articles presented. As we know, the May town meeting typically is not heavy on capital requests. So that would be the date I would recommend. And if it needed to go to Wednesday, it'd be May 16th. It's a Monday and a Wednesday. We do run into the issue of the last Monday of the month being the Memorial Day holiday, so.
Okay.
It has to be before then. So if the board's comfortable with that, we could open the warrant tomorrow and proceed accordingly.
Yeah, and the town clerk did email me earlier today, Amy Neves, asking for a date other than the 21st. So I think May 14th worked, so if.
So May 14th is the date you're looking for?
Yes, correct.
The 21st.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion.
Yeah, I had handed you a second one right there, I think.
Is that the second?
May 14th as our town meeting date.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll also vote in favor and make that unanimous. Town administrators report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just the three items tonight. We received two grants. I've been informed by Fire Chief Tui. They have been received from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security Department of Fire Services. The grants are the Student Awareness of Fire Education, in the amount of $4,308, and the Senior Awareness of Fire Education, in the amount of $2,615. These two grants help pay for manpower and supplies to be delivered to the schools and seniors. Both programs also seek to educate students and seniors on fire prevention, general home safety, and how to be better prepared in the event of a fire. Since the student program was initiated some 23 years ago, average annual child fire deaths have been reduced by 72 percent. The senior program was initiated three years ago and hopefully will have the same success. I do want to advise the board that we will have on Wednesday, July, January 24th, a Budget Department head meeting to begin the budget process. We will review the budget timeline as well as guidelines for budget preparation, including requesting additional personnel. And then finally, as this board already knows, and most people do know, we have received notification from Ardar Glass, Inc., that it will permanently cease all operations at the Milford Plant, which is located at One National Street, with a 14-day period beginning on March 14th, 2018. This will result in the permanent termination, unfortunately, of all 251 employees working at the plant. The, I have spoken with a number of representatives from Ardar, and they wanted to so advise the board and the public. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have tonight.
No, and thank you, Rick. Out of those 251 employees, do we know how many are Milford residents? Can we find out? And is there anything that we can provide them with resources or anything?
I'm sure we could find out, but I don't know.
I did have, did have someone from the Senior Vice President's office call. I spoke to her late last week. It was an uncomfortable call for both of us. I've let her, I certainly let them know our level of disappointment. But that's a decision that was made, and obviously, there's no turning back. But I do wanna at least provide as many of the, any of the Milford residents that we can with whatever resources. Maybe we can reach out to both our state rep and our state senator for some state resources as well, just for looking for jobs, training, some of the union schools, whatever it is, so that we can hopefully assist any way we can in getting them, getting them new jobs.
Was there any reference made of what they plan to do with the building, the facility?
No, I did ask. There was not.
I asked the same and had no, no further information.
And we could provide a letter from this board to their Senior Executive Vice President's office that you spoke to. I don't know the individual's name.
Yep, and, and the president and the chairman of the board and everything is, and the international president are all here. They're all provided in the letter.
That question is important because we need to understand, do they plan on decommissioning it? Do they plan on selling it as is? What their plans are for the facility. You know, we're talking about a facility when 250 people are losing their jobs, but, you know, maybe there's an opportunity to co-market it where some of those employees would be working again if the company only worked with us to help. And where Will's point is, the job training might be more specific if we had an understanding of who they're marketing to or what type of corporation they think would be best suited for that location, who their target customers are. This has already been discussed, and we just wish they would come up and tell us. That helps us locally.
Well, that's a conversation that I had with Rick. You think they at least would've come before us and said, "We have plans to do this. Is there anything that you as a board or as a community could, you know, could do to help us so that we can keep the facility, you know, running, keep 250 people employed?" And I said to Rick, "My concern is it's gonna be a big, big, old, empty building just sitting there."
Yeah.
You know, and we've gotta make sure that we take the right steps so that it's, you know, not vandalized and, you know, it just doesn't become an ISOL.
Well, that's the other thing that it would be helpful from a building department standpoint and from a fire chief's standpoint, that we make sure in working with them that that building is secured and doesn't represent vandalism hazard. We saw what happened in Worcester when an empty building went up. They lost firefighters trying to save people they thought were in there. So we need to be mindful of that as well.
And Bill, you may know the history, or Rick, if we can find the history. I know prior to it becoming our dog group, there was a TIF that the then Board of Selectmen gave to, it began with a B. I forget what the parent company was then, but that was back in '08 or '09?
'09.
Sangal Bayne, right?
I think even, was it Sangal Bayne?
I think before that.
Before that bar.
It was 2009.
2009.
Sangal Bayne, yeah.
And did those, did that TIF arrangement follow the transfers of ownership?
I don't know. I'd have to check.
Yeah, if you can and just see, I mean, I doubt at this point in time there's any, I'm sure there's no clawback or anything like that, but I think we should at least investigate all of our options.
Because my, along with that, we did, and your recollection is accurate. That was in 2009, we had a TIF agreement, and town meeting had voted on that TIF agreement. And it would be my expectation that they also have some communication with the state about that TIF.
Sure.
There may be portions of that that remain transferable, and we should look into it.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Any old business gentleman?
Old business, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, nor do I. We do have an executive session. We are meeting with Attorney Ernest Pettenary regarding the Highway Department contract and with town council regarding the Central Street property. Need a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Second.
I'll also vote in favor and that's unanimous. Roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote in affirmative, make that unanimous. We will not be returning to exec, to regular session. Have a good night. Thank you.